I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Caucus to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Ms. Marlin? Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
In sort of keeping track of stuff, if we'd like to get public input from anybody who's here, if, I know Carl Lettis, oh, it's on, nothing's coming through?
No.
No, it is, oh, okay, so I'm gonna have to be right up against it, okay, maybe they can pick up the, tweak it in the back a little bit. If you'd like to speak, why don't you go ahead and fill one out so that the clerk has your name and address for the record. I know Carl Lettis filled one out. As the current caucus chair, it's my duty to probably call for an election of a caucus chair for the new council, and I would like to nominate Dennis Roberts.
Second. Second.
And Mike is here. Mike, the first thing we've got to do is get a caucus chair. This is an all council, all elected officials caucus, this is how we've done it. I've done it for the last eight years, and I'm interested in turning it over to Dennis, who has served almost as long as I have on council, in one form or another, and I thought it'd be nice to pass it on to him. So I've nominated him, and Diane has seconded that. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're it, Dennis, thank you.
I abstained on that one.
You didn't have any yard signs.
It was a lot cheaper that way, I think. Okay, well, thank you very much, actually. I'm sure that Charlie, you've got plenty of things that will occupy your time, so I'm happy to help out. So yeah, every once in a while, we do meet in caucus session, which is really a kind of a preparatory think tank for the city council to prepare items and thoughts and set goals for the future. So we do have here a proposed study session agenda for the caucus between 6:00 and 7:30 today. We have blue slips in the back for people who'd like to submit, they're going to be able to speak for about five minutes during a public input session. But to begin and get, I guess, a history and some information to share with the public, there are five items on the agenda, and the first one is a budget overview about revenues and expenditures. Who's gonna be presenting that?
The mayor's going to be.
Mayor, okay, so mayor, I'll give you time to help and share this information.
Okay.
There's some questions here. Who may open this?
Oh, there's two pages, sorry.
My mic on. What I have is the memo I sent you on how to bridge the budget gap, which is a $1 million gap, and that includes about $800,000 in spending reductions and about $343,000 in revenue increases, which add up to $1.1 million. The biggest single expenditure that I'm proposing that we hold the line on would be health insurance. We budgeted 2.5 million for this fiscal year, which is, we held the budget constant at last year's budget. However, last year, we spent 2 million. So I propose that we should hold the spending at $2 million. And I know I've made the statement that Carl, Health Alliance, has higher insurance premiums, and Mike Madigan's asked me for the details on that. We will be getting details from our insurance broker, I've asked him for the numbers nationally and rest of the state. But I think if you looked at the map that was in the News Gazette about where the health insurance for Obamacare is going to be, what the rates are, you would have seen that this is higher than it is in Chicago. And that was the first hint that I ever got that we had higher rates, was when Health Alliance had a dispute with the state of Illinois a couple of years ago, and the statement was made that health insurance premiums are higher in Champaign County than they are in Chicago, which really floored me, because I thought, why would that be? And I concluded it was because they're pretty much a monopoly. So I think the fact that we are probably paying higher rates, the other bit of information I have is Bruce Cubberly, who moved here from Ohio, said his premiums went way up when he moved here, they doubled, and he had slightly less good coverage. So I could send you that, but I'll get everybody the information from our insurance broker. Other cities have held the line on health insurance. I know that Chattanooga, Tennessee, which is a much bigger city than we are, actually went to self-funding, and they bought x-ray machines and set up a pharmacy and did all kinds of things, and they were able to hold their health insurance costs steady. So it can be done, and I'm not suggesting that we follow their example, because obviously we're much smaller, but I think that we should be looking for options to give people the best coverage we can, ideally the same coverage they have now, but at a lower cost. Or at least not at a higher cost than what we've already paid this year. So any questions about the detail on where the spending cuts are and what the revenue increases? The only revenue increase is the quarter cent sales tax, and for the sake of the public, I think the council members are all aware, we have a $1 million gap because our property taxes have been cut by about $1 million by the hospitals not paying property taxes. Any questions on that?
Just a few last questions.
Okay, the next chart I have is what's happened to our three largest revenues from fiscal 2005-06 through 2013-14, which is the year that we're in now. And I have the property tax, the sales tax, and the income tax, and then the total of those big three. And you could see that from 2005 to 2006, we had a 15% growth overall in our three main sources of revenue. Our property tax revenue went up 6%, and this was when we were actually lowering the rates, I believe. We've steadily lowered the property tax rate until, I think it was last year, when we had to raise it slightly, but we've tried to keep it the same as the city of Champaign. So before the recession hit, we were getting 6% and 7% growth in the property tax, but as you can see, in 2009-10, the growth fell from 6% to 2%, and then down to 1%, and then zero and zero, and for next year, it's minus 5%. And one of the reasons I asked for the sales tax was that I don't want to raise the property tax in Urbana because of the hospitals not paying their taxes anymore. I think that's unfair to everyone else, every other business and all the residents. So my suggested goal would be that we hold the line on the tax rate, or the tax levy, whatever we can do, probably the rate. And getting on to these other taxes, I built in the proposed increase in the sales tax for next year, for the year that we're in right now. And so from 2006 above 2005, there was a 25% growth. It fell to 12, then 0, then minus 4, 4, 6, and 1%. And then for next year, with the additional quarter cent, we expect a 5% growth. The income tax similarly was rocketing along at 13% the first year on this chart. It fell to minus 5% and then minus 10% during the recession, and as we started to climb out of the recession, it started to get positive growth again, but still nothing near the 13% that we were looking at before, and we're estimating 3%. So when you add all these three things together, it's a 1% increase in those three major revenue sources, and that doesn't really go very far. This is just the general fund, by the way. Does anybody have any questions on that? Yes.
How has our population tracked along this time? And the purpose of my question is to figure out what's the tax burden per capita.
I think we grew by like 10,000 people between, was it 10,000 people or less than that? What was the growth between 2000 and 2010?
So...
I have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Between 2000 and 2012, it was 14.2%.
The population for 2012?
The population for 2012 was 14.2% larger than 2000.
Okay, because the census is done in 2010.
Right, I guess this is an estimate, it's just the first page I happened to get up.
Okay. Okay, well, a lot of those people don't pay property taxes because a lot of them are students. We have 4,000 Chinese students.
Well, but they rent property and...
Oh, some of them do, but some of them live in dorms.
Probably, just raise your hand. Well, if the 14.2% is accurate, then that'd be about 58, 5900 in growth. Am I doing my math right?
Yes.
I think we went from like 37,000 to 42,000. Yeah.
Yeah, let's raise your hands and have a conversation that way, instead of just jumbled. Carol?
Okay.
I just wanted to ask the mayor, because we know that the quarter cent increase that we did won't close the entire gap, what's the proposal that we should be looking at to close the rest of that?
That's on the first sheet here.
So just these things?
It's a combination of 811,500 estimated in spending cuts in the general fund compared to 343,000, which is a quarter cent sales tax for six months. So when you add those two together, they bridge the gap.
So what I'm saying is, these are not estimate, I mean, these are not necessarily just proposed, they are actual. This is where we're actually going to bridge the gap.
Well, the health insurance is not actual, because we're still figuring out what we're going to be doing, but I'm suggesting that as a standard, we should try to keep the dollars the same, because that's one of our costs that's been going up double digits.
Okay.
So I think if we have higher rates, if that's true, I believe that's true, but we'll check it out, I'd like to see if we could just hold the line on the actual dollars that we spend.
Okay.
And, you know, give our employees the best...
So this could fluctuate a little bit here.
Well, yeah, but I mean, this is just a proposal.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything else, we've actually...
We've been in control.
Well, actually, we found out about the pensions, and that was the actuary saying that we needed to put less in than before, and I believe it's because they have done much better on investments than they had in the past. We had to really increase our contributions to the pensions when the stock market fell. We have always, every year, put in exactly what the actuary said was necessary, so we have fully funded fire and police pensions, and also, we have to completely fund whatever IMRF says we owe. So Illinois Minimum Retirement Fund, those three funds that I just talked about are in good shape. They are not like the state retirement funds, because there's been a steady effort to put money in every single year, so we keep up with it. So, I mean, I went through this before. We do, we had an emergency with a building, this building air conditioning going out, and that's going to cost $60,000. We need to add $82,000 to have the IT director position, a separate position. Of course, we won't need that whole thing for the year, because, you know, we're into the fiscal year already, but that's the salary. So it's more spending cuts than revenue increases.
Okay, we've got another question over here, Mike.
Okay, Mike?
Okay, so I just think you answered one, so that 82,000 is a projected annual salary for the IT.
Right. I guess the audience is having a hard time listening, or hearing us, rather.
Okay, so my, yeah, you just answered my first question, that that was an annualized rate for the IT, the 82.
And it's, yeah, it picks up in the 56,000, because there's a delay in filling three positions.
Okay.
So I'm taking it into account at that level.
Okay.
So the net is going to be, well, three months not in, and we're already past three months. So it should be a little bit more than that.
Right. Okay, I guess another way to look at your chart here, and this is the first chance I've had to look at this, the three largest revenues chart, is, another way to look at this is, in the seven fiscal years, through this year, you're projecting a 25% increase, not projecting, I mean, it's a 25% increase in revenues over that seven years.
Yeah.
So if you, I guess if you look at that overall, that is a pretty healthy number, especially through a recession. So I just, you know, think my, my whole line of thinking in this is going to be, even through recession, revenues are growing, therefore, we should continue to look for ways to become more efficient first, instead of looking for new revenue, other than revenue that comes from new development, which I'm all for, and I think that's what ought to rise to the top of this whole, this whole goals process.
Well, a lot of the increase in the property tax was from new development, but that slowed when the recession hit. But you can say that the revenue grew, which is true, grew by $5 million for these three sources, but the expenses also grew too. We're under binding arbitration for our two major unions, police and fire, and we had double-digit increases in health insurance. So there's a lot of things that are not within our control, but I think we should try to get control over something that's growing as fast as health insurance has grown. But I think, you know, when people say, what, where are the cuts? I saw that on a list served from SUNA. I mean, I've talked about $800,000 in cuts, and we've been doing these things all through the recession. We held jobs open, we didn't put anybody on, we didn't lay off any employees, because I think that's an expensive thing to do after you train somebody, and we didn't give raises a few years, we had zero increases. But, you know, if you go to arbitration, I think we had to give 1% one year, and then higher than that the subsequent years. So there's things that we can't just say, well, we're not going to spend anymore, unless you want to cut services, and I think we need the basic services that we're providing. And if you look at Urbana versus other cities, we don't pay as high a wage here as they do in Champaign. I think we have a very good workforce, and I think we get a lot done, but we're not wasting money.
And certainly, comments about potential areas where future saving can happen can certainly be part of the thing that comes out of these discussions for the city goals. Charlie, well, would you like to speak then?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it's really important to look at the pattern of these revenues. If you look at the subtotal column, you know, in 2005-6, which I'll just refer to as '06, you're at 15-4. There are big jumps in '07 and '08 to 17-7 and 19-4, and then we're relatively flat, just very small increases from there to the current. In fact, we took a drop in 2010 to 18-9, and we've been slowly coming back up from that. The last three years, this one being the third of those three years, we've gone up only by $200,000 each of those three years. So that, you know, so that means we're basically flat. One of the requests that Diane had, which I've quickly sketched here, was that we quickly know what the different departments are in terms of the total budget. So just as, just as some summary numbers, police, fire, public works represent 71% of the general budget. If you figure in the general budget, the transfers, the library costs, and the, and capital improvement, they represent 24.7 million out of a $34.9 million budget here. The library is 9%. CD, the executive and finance are each in the 4%, 4.5% category in terms of these expenditures. And capital improvement plan is less than $1 million a year, so it's really a pretty small percentage of the total budget.
So that's a pretty good overview, other questions about that topic? We'll move on if not. All right, preliminary summary of past goals and accomplishment over the last several years, and I know Mike Munson has been tracking that for the city council. Pretty surprising how many goals we've met, maybe, Mike, you can give us a summary for that.
Okay. As we read through these goals, you can see that the previous city council achieved many of its written goals. Even in cases where a goal wasn't fully met, generally, there was substantive progress of some kind to report. We kept public safety, staffing with our police and fire departments steady despite tight city budgets. We have excellent police and fire departments that go beyond what most cities do. It's notable that Champaign was so impressed with our former deputy police chief that they hired him as their police chief, that's Anthony Cobb. It might just be good luck, or good luck and good police work, but it's also notable that Urbana mostly managed to avoid drive-by shootings this summer. We kept up the pressure on bad landlords, citing them, fining them, and in one case, condemning three apartment buildings that were unsafe. As you know, the administration would like to add a third inspector to keep up the pressure on bad landlords and shorten our systematic inspection cycle of rental homes and apartments. Our downtown has further to go, but it's seen tremendous progress in recent months. We've got the $8.7 million Boneyard project, it's well underway, along with associated improvements to Race and Broadway Streets. Main Street and downtown is also under construction, bicycle lanes are going to be added, and it's going to be converted from four lanes down to three lanes, also with some sidewalk bump outs at some downtown intersections. The Main Street project actually goes quite a bit east, all the way from Cedar Street to Dodson Drive, that's a $3.25 million project. Matt Cho has brought a new spark of excitement to our downtown, he's renovated the old, underused UC Center buildings, and has opened a cafeteria and company, Flying Machine Coffee, and collab in recent weeks. The downtown has also seen the opening of the already popular Sitara Restaurant, recently on Race Street in Lincoln Square. An old favorite reopened, Black Rock Pizza, and the old 88 Broadway space. There's also the planned opening of the A+ VIP Lounge in the former V Picasso space. And Norman Carolyn Baxley and Dave Borchers have bought the vacant Stevens Building and plan to renovate it into five upstairs apartments, ground-level retail and commercial, or commercial. The opening and expansion of Common Ground Food Co-op has been an exciting development for downtown and Lincoln Square as well in recent years. City staff continues to work to try and find a major anchor project or projects that can bring even more businesses and residents downtown. We've got some major road projects planned in the next few years that we've been working on, including the construction of Olympian Drive and North Lincoln Avenue. A $3 million improvement is planned for an airport road between Walla Road and US 45, and there's a planned, I believe, $8 million widening and improvement of High Cross Road. Much of the funding for these projects is from state grants, should be noted. We've made progress in environmental sustainability, we adopted a climate action plan in November 2012, commence us to reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 25% by 2020, that's from our base level year of 2007. We also adopted a sustainable water management plan this past July. The city's added over 20 miles of bicycle lanes and five miles of bike routes in recent years, and has been designated a bronze level bicycle-friendly community. Despite a tough budget, council members retained social service grant funding and helped Unit 116 School District, we helped them out tremendously, we provided a $21,700 grant to keep the district splash program operating, that's an after-school program. We can always do more, but there's a lot to be proud of, of what the past council achieved these past four years.
All right, are there any comments or questions for Mike on the review of goals? It wasn't a, topic by topic, or...
We could, that was just a statement, if, we could go over the goals if you'd like, that's up to the council, if you don't want to, that's fine too.
Well, we have them printed out, we've shared them electronically, I think, they're probably in pretty good shape. They've been updated, the copy that we have on our desk is the most recent?
It is.
Okay.
And that's what you know.
Great. Does anybody else want to, any pursue a particular aspect of what we just heard? Charlie?
I think what I'd suggest we do is sort of a, you know, after we read through this and make any notations on it that we'd like, that we adopt it as the final report of the previous council, and put it up on our website. And because I think components here are probably going to roll over into our next set of council goals, and, and if I can, I'm ready to introduce the next concept here, Diane, which Diane and I worked on, if everybody's ready.
Okay. Let me just ask one question then, I guess, to the group. If you see a topic or an area that isn't within the scope of the seven detailed topics, you know, send it out to us so that we can all begin, you know, thinking about something new and different as well. All right.
I'm just saying to eat, I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead, Carol.
Procedurally, I'm just trying to figure out the process. You want us to email the topics that are not covered by this?
Well, I think we're going to be collecting those, and I think that probably we'd like to receive, I mean, we haven't talked really about how we're going to input, you know, the new goals yet.
Okay.
We're certainly going to be collecting them from the city's, the community as well, which is what the point of this meeting is.
But it's not necessarily for this meeting for us to go through that process?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Yeah, Eric Jacobson?
So I, I think it would be useful, in all of our documents, the goals documents, when we talk about implementation, our budget documents and so forth, to clearly label what we are doing with money from Urbana taxpayers, what we are doing with money from federal grants, what we're doing with money from state grants. I think there has sometimes been some confusion, and we've sometimes been hammered for spending Urbana taxpayers' dollars, but in fact, we should have been congratulated, congratulated for getting federal grants and state grants. And I think that, I think we could be more explicit in labeling all of the stuff that we do as to where the dollars are coming from.
Okay, that's a thoughtful idea. Okay, Charlie?
Okay, yeah, so Diane and I, as promised, sat down and tried to draw up sort of a framework from which to jump into another set of goals. Eight years ago, I led the effort and did most of the bookkeeping and all that, and it took a long time, and it was a tough go. Four years ago, Mike Munson, as chief of staff, jumped in and helped rewrite them, put them in this, more or less, the format that we currently see into more general areas of cohesion, the way I think of it. And I expect that Mike's going to play a very similar role again. The idea this time, though, was to maybe make the process even broader than we've done in the past, by getting, by trying to get more public input than we did last time around, with the idea of starting tonight, get this announced out there, and maybe even take, do a little bit of a road show at some point, you know, some of the ideas. Anyway, so Diane and I sat down, put this, put together this framework, it is by no means complete, it's just something to get us started with, and it is based on the previous document. You'll see that all seven areas come out of the six areas that are on the current set of goals. Diane split the sixth one into two different areas. The idea of quality of life is separated from effective city government. And so one of the other ideas that Diane requested was a survey, and so we're suggesting some survey questions. So maybe one of the first things to talk about tonight is to, you know, if, is to talk about the general framework, or we're missing some individual topics. The ideas within it are just, you know, breakout, and we'll be adding to those, I'm sure. But if we're missing a general topic here, and then to talk about the survey questions themselves, and how we go about doing that.
Okay. All right, so, so your proposal is that we're going to form a, form a public survey, we have some supposed, or some suggested questions. Do you want to, Diane, do you want to read those questions, or you want to make that kind of a formal discussion at this point?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I also had a couple of comments on these seven general goal areas. Number three, we expanded economic and development to include entrepreneurship, and this reflects the recent discussion... the recent discussion we had about home-based businesses and the new form of entrepreneurship that we're seeing in the city. And we really wanted to recognize and, you know, focus on ways to encourage that as well. So that's why we added entrepreneurship to that. And then for the previous goals, had mentioned, or had focused on a vibrant downtown, but we also wanted to expand that to include the other very important business districts in the city, such as Cunningham Avenue, Philo Road, the campus district, and increasingly Route 130, since that's going to be widened and expanded, and hopefully Menards is still going to come at some point. So that was that. And then, again, as Charlie said, we split out quality of life and then effective city government. So the thought was that we would get, also seek input from the public, both in these meetings, possibly other meetings, and via the city website. So we thought we could ask some very simple questions and let, and get feedback that way. So our suggested questions, and these can be modified as people see fit. Number one, take a look at these seven goals and rank them in order of importance, in your mind, with one being the most important and seven being the least important. Another option would be to have us list or select some potential projects and initiatives that we know are going to be coming up in the next few years, and ask residents to select projects they consider to be the most important. Obviously, we'd have to start with the list and take it from there, and it'd have to be one that's reasonable for us to accomplish. And then another question could be, what are the three most important issues facing the city of Urbana? In other words, what should, what do you think we need to be spending our time and resources on? And then the fourth would be to get an idea of where people live, the people, you know, geographic diversity in folks answering the survey. So just ask for the intersection closest to their home. But the idea would be to ask people what's important to the residents of Urbana, and what do you think we need to be focusing on? And we may be surprised at the answers we get.
Right.
And I think we can set this up with something like Survey Monkey or TruPaul or whatever, some of the...
So there'd be multiple ways of communicating the survey questions to the public? All right. And Carol, I'm going to ask you if you have thoughts about this, because you were one of the persons who raised the question about seeking public input, too. So do you have anything to say on these topics right now?
Yeah, I had other topics, actually, that now that I have a, I only looked at the previous council goals that we got in our email. So I haven't had a chance, of course, to look at what Charlie just handed out to see how many of these things actually fit under some of the categories that you already have.
Oh, these were mailed out last, these were emailed last week to the council.
These, the ones you all proposed?
Yes.
So I missed those. I just looked at the other ones. So a couple of areas that might be under there is, we talked about this, Diane, about some areas around contracting for staff who are appointed. Should we have contracts for staff that are appointed?
That would be under number seven, employee policies and practices.
So under number seven?
Yeah, these are very general, these are just very general areas of conversation.
So some of these areas that I have, I need to look back at what you all have sent, so I can see how many of mine are really listed.
I bet they'll all fit in there, yeah.
So I'll look at that, and then I'll come back in a second.
Great, okay. All right. Other discussion on setting up the survey, or just the general topics, the seven different topics? Rob, yes, Charlie?
Yeah, so the hard part to me is, well, first, you know, if we agree on the seven goals of those areas, that's a little bit easier, I think, than listing potential projects. If we want to list potential projects out there on a web survey, we're going to have to come up with a list of projects fairly quickly. And it may very well, you know, with staff and our thinking, we might be able to come up with that, and plus, you know, we'll also have a spot for other in the survey. So it's going to take some work to tally all this up. Diane and I, Diane's volunteered to do one part of it, and I'll do the other part, and maybe anybody else who likes playing with surveys can jump in.
Are you thinking mostly of capital improvement plans and public projects, or any kinds of projects?
Lots, yeah, different projects, because we had different projects. If you go through our current goals, you know, you can pick out the projects that we had in the goals. And so it's that kind of a list that we put together, you know, Boneyard Phase Two, or Boneyard Part Two, Boneyard Part Three, for example. Those would be examples. A bike lane project, a major street project would be another one. Windsor Road, you know, we list some, we list some examples of projects, actually, in the Public Works example here under public safety. So there's, there are seven projects that are listed there, of one form or another. So that kind of thing.
Okay, very good. Okay. So anybody else want to comment before we move on? Okay.
I just want to ask a clarifying question.
Okay, clarifying question. Carol?
So Charlie, are you saying that you, like, my topics that may not fall under any of these categories, for instance, if there's an additional category that's not covered here, then we need to propose that on, for the survey? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 we need to get it in, we need to get it into the seven.
Okay, and then the other point is, if there are other projects that you want to do, for instance, I think we really need to look at some plans around the housing area, which is in here, but for low-income housing, what we have currently is kind of middle-income housing. Don't cover people who really are low-income. And so maybe that needs to be put under here as a goal.
That would be, yeah, we would, that would be a project under, say, quality of life.
Okay.
It'd be a specific project. So we have the seven general areas.
So seven general areas that we can throw the other things under there?
Right, and seven areas. So do these seven general areas cover all of the potential projects you can think of, all the potential goals that you can think of? If they don't, we need to either expand the category, expand the topic, or come up with another area, an eighth area.
Okay.
Yeah. And we don't have to discuss, we don't have to decide it tonight, but it would be good to figure this out in a couple of weeks, so that we can put out a survey within, say, a month, you know, something like that.
Okay, Eric, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you. In addition to, you know, asking survey questions about these particular items, I wonder if we might get some really interesting stuff by encouraging people to think more broadly. I mean, think for a moment of how Urbana has changed in the last 50 years, or let's say the last 40 years, which I've been here, and the changes have been enormous. And so I wonder if, I'd really like to know if people sort of let their imaginations run, what would they like Urbana to look like in 50 years? What would they like the economic mix to be? What would they like the housing to be? What would they like it to look like physically? And maybe, I don't know, maybe we won't get anything interesting from that. Maybe it'll all be completely impractical. But maybe there'll be some interesting ideas. I mean, so I'd like to have that be kind of part of the survey. I will write the quest, Charlie said you write the question and I'll put it in. That's fine. Those kinds of questions are really, well, actually, good ones are not so easy to write, but I'll give it a try, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's a kind of a valuable farther-thinking way to direct the future of Urbana, by imagination first and then by practical application. All right. And, you know, some of our city plans do address us a little bit. We just did a downtown plan update. We do have, you know, long-range goals, but they always will change because we change. All right. All right, so that's set in motion, I think. A nice direction. We'll be looking for implementation, not implementation, but public input on those things, also at future meetings. I guess we could go to, are we ready for public input at this point? Charlie, do you have?
I would note that we got email from Rob and Arbiter.
How do we?
And we also, let's see, Esther's here, she sent us some email. We also got email from Cynthia Hoyle. So we got two additional emails that all of us have gotten. Did the clerk get those? Phyllis, were you copied on those? Okay.
Are they short enough to read, or should?
No, they're too long to read.
Too long to read, okay.
I'll make sure that those are included in the record.
Okay.
And if anybody from the public wants to see those, they can get it from the clerk. But I'll get those three sent to the clerk.
Very good. Sounds good. All right, so we do have some people who have, well, we actually have only three blue slips turned in at this time, so if you have a desire to do public input on the city council's goals and study session, I'll start with those who have contributed to this point. And the blue slips are in the back of the room, if you wish to pass them up to us. So we have maybe about five minutes each, if you would like to come forward when you're called. Carletta Donaldson, you're the first one to present a blue slip. Come on up and please give us your name, address, and your comments.
Thanks. It's Carletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookens Drive, Urbana. Can you guys hear me back there?
I'm glad.
Okay. Okay. This might be a good time, and I'm not sure, well, I talked to my representative, this might be a good time to look at the boards and commissions that the city of Urbana has as well. I'm not sure if this goes under public safety and community development, or number two, improve efficiency, or number seven, effective city government, under interdepartmental cooperation or intergovernmental cooperation. But as I look through the list, I know that some of them are designed to meet maybe once a year, or four times a year, or two times a year, but then there's some that meet monthly, and they should probably look at, if they're not meeting, if they're designed to meet monthly and they're only meeting two or three times a year, that might be something to look at, or maybe to combine some of the boards and commissions. That might be a good thing also. Who knows, there might be monies to provide a stipend to encourage people to join boards and commissions once you condense them. So that's one good thing. And then Mr. Gray, you passed out two copies of, I think, the first portion. Is that going to be online, what you passed out, or? Yeah, is that online? I didn't see that. There were only two copies available when?
I'll put it on the website.
You'll put it on the website, okay. Thanks. And then the final thing is, happy 50th anniversary to Eric and Naomi. And that's it. And then, no, the final thing is, if you could speak into your mic, we're having a hard time hearing. We can hear the mayor.
We need to all pretend we're rock stars.
Yeah, there's three or four of you that we can hear, but yeah.
Just get up, get up next to the mic. I don't know if they can tweak the back room and up the, there's a way to up the volume in the back, and I don't know if they can get that or not.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next person is Reverend of Brooks. Would you like to speak at this time?
Reverend T. A. Brooks, 916 Fairlawn. Actually, I have two subjects, because I just found another one. But my first one on the blue card is quality of life in regard to bullet point two, work towards creating a community report card that looks at such factors as employment, unemployment, graduation rates, incarceration rates, and poverty levels, with the Urbana Human Relations Commission leading the effort. I'm concerned of whoever suggested that the Human Relations Commission would lead the effort, because in my own personal experience with the human relations officer, it seems very difficult to either get him on the phone or to have him respond to email when it was his suggestion that the communication should be through email. I feel as a citizen of Urbana that if I need to respond to you through email, you can email me from anywhere. It doesn't necessarily say you're in the city building doing city's business. So I'm concerned about that. So I don't know how that can transpire in this particular goal as a point of being a quality of life. I'm just not encouraged if they're going to lead the charge because of the said things I've said before. Point number two is, I want to congratulate Dennis, in particular with the sister cities. I was involved when we were sister ci, well, as we are sister cities with Malawi, South Africa. I am encouraged by the mayor and her staff in trying to get me over there. So I'm looking forward to this new adventure with China. And as I stated in the meeting about Malawi, my question was, do Malawians want to see people who look like them? So I would ask the same question. Does China want to see people who look like them? So I would hope the committee would be as diverse as it was with our sister cities in Malawi, South Africa. So I'm thankful for Dennis and Scott, and I understand they got awards and all these great things, and so I'll be keeping that on the radar. But so I'm grateful to the city in those regards, and so those are my comments for this evening.
Okay, thanks very much. And I do recall trying to rustle you over to Malawi at one point there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Third person who submitted a slip to speak is Esther Pat. Again, name and your address in about five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. My name's Esther Pat. I live at 706 South Kohler Avenue, and I am the director of the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union. And I have lived in this community for 40 years, and I'm going to talk about three things that have not changed in 40 years, but should have. And I was glad to see the general topic of housing listed, and this time it was grouped under quality of life, which it wasn't four years ago. And there are three housing-related issues I'd like to address. One, and they are all in your goals from four years ago, but have mostly, well, they're all from your goals from four years ago. One, and the four years ago, was Strategy H under quality of life, which was continue to promote additional affordable housing opportunities. Urbana is not alone in failing in the way, well, on the issue that actually Councilmember Am is just briefly alluded to, that affordable housing programs are all about helping people who are not homeowners become homeowners, and doing things like tearing down lakeside terraces, and then the way you deal with homelessness is, let's have social services. And there is a radical notion out there that has been, actually, I guess, about 40 years, but say for 30 years, that of the way to approach homelessness is to provide housing for people who are homeless, so they won't be homeless anymore. And it's, this, I mean, this is the hardest of the three things I'm going to talk about for you, because this costs money, but they're just, please just be aware that affordable housing, that's affordable to people who make $30,000 a year, is not addressing the needs, I mean, the real need, the real significant need in the community, is there are lots of hard-working people, working two, sometimes three, part-time jobs, and still not quite making $20,000 a year. And just, I just want to remind you that Crystal View Townhomes, Prairie Green, and Rainbow View Apartments, which are all tax-credit affordable housing, you have to make $30,000 a year to afford a two-bedroom apartment there, unless you've got the subsidy from somewhere else. And we really need minimum-wage housing. We really need housing for people who make $16,000, $17,000, $18,000 a year and need a place for themselves and a child, or two children. But that's not an easy ask. I just wanted to bring it up, because it always should. Another item on this from four years ago was the continue to address the issues of tenant relocations resulting from non-payment and/or condemnations. Yes, that was a goal that you folks had four years ago, and actually, nothing really ever came of that that was of any use. I did go to a number of... I did go to a number of meetings, and the proposal was pretty much city officials from Champaign-Urbana trying to figure out how to get the social service community to take care of the problem. And actually, the whole thing obviously fell apart with the condemnation in February where just, everyone was just kicked out in 24 hours. And there was, I mean, there was nothing happened at all. I do understand you have been working on it. I talked to Mike Munson, maybe Mayor June, about some things Mayor Pressing was having him look into. So I do hope that you will move forward with that this year. And the final, final issue, which won't be any surprise that I've come to talk to you about, and that is about code enforcement. Four years ago, the only place code enforcement was mentioned was under public safety. And I think it was all within the mind of using code enforcement to deal with places where you have crime problems. But it is, code enforcement for rental properties is a quality of life issue. I'm very glad that the council has taken a first and important, well, is about to take a first and important step, that there's a proposal that will be on your agenda through the next Monday night about fining landlords. Obviously, you have a serious, a very, very gravely serious problem here at the city of Urbana that your staff of community development do not want to enforce the law against slum landlords, and that has to stop. And I'm hoping that what, that provision particularly, one aspect of it that Councilmember Marlon put forward that-
You have one minute, Ms. Pat.
Thank you. That, that there will be review every other month, that the city council and the public will get a report on what's going on with finding. I think that's essential because I walked away six years ago, six, that's almost seven years ago now, thinking you had established a finding system. And it was very disappointing to discover that it just, just never ever got used. And even now, I mean, as recently as a week ago, I had a client who still, I mean, the staff still isn't doing it. As long as they have discretion, they are preferring not to find landlords who should be fined. And you're just never going to improve the quality of rental housing if you take the attitude of the city of Urbana is more interested in protecting the landlord from being fined than protecting the tenant and the community from substandard housing. So I hope that you will have a council goal that's something along the lines of enhancing enforcement of property maintenance codes. So it's something that will be a priority for you in the next four years. Thank you so much.
Also, all right, that brings to a close, did you have a question for Esther Pat, or did you? Okay. That brings to a close the, yeah, that brings to a close those people who formed, who stated a wish to speak at this time. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak about council goals? Do you want to turn your slip in?
I didn't turn it in because I was late getting here.
You can still turn it in now.
Okay.
I'll do that for you.
Thank you. No, I didn't fill it out. Because I just decided, but that's okay.
We, can we guess?
Can you speak first and then fill it out? Yeah, why did you?
Yes. You have, please introduce yourself and your address in.
Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, 1309 West Tremont Street, Interbana, Illinois. I didn't come, I wasn't planning to speak tonight because I thought it would be so packed that you would have to have the fire marshal here. I really did because, because I did encourage people to come because this was the time they could get their opinions out. And I didn't think they would have that five-minute limit. So I really, I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I felt I couldn't go home without speaking because I'm very disappointed that, you know, the people didn't come. Because I know there are a lot of concerns out there, especially about the quality of life in Urbana as it relates to housing. And I think Ms. Pat, Ms. Pat spoke very well about the very, very poor, $16,000 and $17,000 and under having a place to live. With almost all the public housing is gone in Champaign-Urbana. And that's one thing in healthcare. I think they're trying to do something with the dental. But the healthcare is so bad for the very, very poor and the homeless. How many homeless people we have? And I'm speaking now as the reverend, I guess, because with the churches and the ministerial alliance and what we are trying to do to try to help, but it's so sad. Now I got to go. But I felt that I, just the quality of life in Champaign-Urbana. You seem to be is one thing we need to watch too, to make sure things go well with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Dennis?
Yes. Reverend Underwood.
Charlie?
Reverend Underwood, a quick question for you. One idea that we've had, we're just getting this process started, and we only realized a couple of weeks ago that we had a fifth Monday to work with. So we haven't done a lot of publicity and stuff. We're still just sort of building a framework. We're going to take this show to the web and hopefully to the public.
I heard, you know, I was, I was here.
Yeah, one idea, one idea I'd like to do is, you know, at least meet in four geographic areas of the city and publicize those, or at least have something at the civic center and try to get more people there. I totally agree with you. I was hoping for a bigger turnout, but, but we haven't done a lot of publicity yet. So do you think we should just bring it to, you know, the four corners of Urbana?
At least.
We could, we could have a meeting up at King School, for example. Would that be a good location?
And do some, the media, the, the media and as well as social media.
Social media, yeah.
Twitter.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what the young folks, and I think the young folks need a part of it. I've been doing a little something in the schools, especially the high schools. They need a voice because they do have something to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, very good. Carol Emmett?
I just wanted to ask also, Dr. Underwood, not necessarily ask, but just bring back to something that's on my list, which was also on your list. Am I too loud? I'm too loud.
No.
See, I speak loud, so I'm feeding.
Maybe I am too loud, too.
But one of the things that I know is important to you, and certainly older parts of the city has the same issue, is infrastructure repair. And so I'm hoping that one of the goals that I want to see, and I still don't know where to put it, like environmental, or I don't know where it goes. But certainly, we need to look at our older parts of the city and look at infrastructure repairs that really need to be done. I'm sure they're over 100 years old in some places. But it should be on a council goal to start doing some analysis of the infrastructure itself underneath the city. And I know that's a goal that you have to.
Oh, certainly, yes.
Public works, under public works.
Especially the ones that wasn't done right in the beginning, and I'm still going to get that researched on.
Okay.
Show that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you again. We have, Diane Marlon.
That topic would fit right under public works.
Public works. Very good. Sure, that's fine. Mayor Pressing.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment to Reverend Underwood that this is just the first meeting. This is going to take a while, and there's going to be all kinds of ways to reach out to people. Maybe if we could have seven meetings, one in each ward. But I think your idea of involving young people is also a very good idea.
Okay, we have one more addition to public input, which we should be wrapping up soon. Carol McCusick. You have five minutes, Carol. Come and share your information, give your name and your address.
Carol McCusick, 1907 North Cunningham. Yeah, I was having the same trouble that other people mentioned about volume. And I don't know if you can tell up there from how each other sound. So I'm looking for a process that would be really basic for working on the, on the process. A process for working on the process. So that was the idea of the Board of Government Information. And I'm just theoretically, I don't see it being forced, the issues of democracy being forced into one of the other categories or being interpreted as a function of the other categories. So probably, I think one of Diane's questions was about it. I think that the, it would be such a place where you would have some experts and you would also have a forum for the people to talk, to identify the problems together. But it seems like the web, or web things are going to be a real big source of solutions. One of the things that I've been noticing is that, that I haven't brought up that much, is that when you have stuff you're thinking about passing at a meeting, if you have pages that were of, web pages that are of unlimited length, then in, somehow in an agenda, you could display the actual, if there was a way to get, not get lost in the thicket of things, the actual, let's say it's a piece of the code and it involves changing it, like you'd have the markup there, and it would be built into the agenda. It wouldn't be like you would click on a link and go to a different place. Then, like after a meeting, sort of in the same way, in the minutes, the marked-up copy would somehow be in the minutes. And that would only be possible because of it being electronic. So what's good about that is that, like the people in the city council, they might have special web stations during the meeting where they could submit motions that have marked-up copy, you know, and it would go up on the screen and we could all see, see it like karaoke or something. And while a certain motion was before the body, the chair couldn't even hear any other motions. They wouldn't be able from, like, it would, I mean, you're the members of this body, but you, let's say you were trying to, the only thing you'd be able to do is, is put, give, offer an amendment to the motion that was up at that time. You know, your computer would kind of control that or something. And, but there'd be a little sidebar that had the different things you could do with the main motion. And would be kind of like regimenting us for, I mean, that's, see, that's like a specific idea, but I think there needs to be some kind of a forum where-
You have one minute, Ms. McCusick.
Where things, because, okay, one illustration came out of the, okay, the discussion of the MEA the other week, that's the municipal electric aggregation. There was a, at the end of, I'm going to say it's 9/3, 3, September 3, there was offering an order to staff to look into different kinds of racks that might be better as part of that package or other energy efficiency projects of the government. Well, the, if, I think if it all been written out, maybe if it had all been written up.
You can have 20 more seconds to kind of complete that thought.
It would be, it would have been manifest that you were talking about incremental money in an upcoming contract that, a contract which did not have incremental money. So you were talking about money that didn't exist. So that's, you know, a lot of times really filling things out is necessary to see the issue even clearly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's going to be an interesting thought to add, clarity of tracking, maybe electronically, actions of the city. Carol?
I think I may have pulled something out of Carol's comments that resonate with me. Part of the process, certainly for me as a new council member, I'm really having trouble here with this microphone. I'm sure you guys can hear me out there right. But part of the process, I think, needs, that needed to be completed or open, which is, I just named it democratic governance as a separate title, similar to something that Carol just said. Underneath that, one of my areas of concern was including participatory budgeting processes. So when we deal with capital improvement plans, the public should have a way to put forward their capital improvement ideas. What would they like to see done across the city? But right now, there's no actual way for that to happen. Underneath that also, for me is, I know the mayor puts together the agenda for the council with the departments, but sometimes that agenda is, I'm unsure what's really priority and what's not priority. But we have agendas that keep us till 11 o'clock at night sometimes, and I haven't been able to figure out why that is and how to more streamline the process a little bit. So I think a category needs to be created, called a democratic process, a democratic governance. And underneath that needs to be the process of city council, so people understand what's happening and how it actually works.
You're all very interesting suggestions. All right, I think that kind of wraps up the public input for this session. The last 25 minutes, which were pretty much right on time, would be open to council discussion. So I guess what I'll do is just say that we've had input from the public. We have a list of potential city goals. We have a suggestion for survey. Now's the time for council to share thoughts and suggest things for the future, I guess. Bill Brown?
I guess just one more thing on the process, as far as, or, I don't know, I guess we're going to be in the process all night tonight, probably. But as far as our, our goal, what we want to end up with, is it, are people thinking we want, we like what we had as far as the goal, strategy, objective, I don't see objectives, but goals and strategies? Or would we maybe try, try thinking about implementing something with more specific objectives and ways to measure progress? That's just one suggestion I had. I think that Mike got the same email. So I think some kind of measurement of goals would, would help for me. Just one thought.
All right. Other topics of concern? Eric?
So there was something that Esther said that resonated with me about people earning under $20,000 a year because I've been crunching some numbers for Naomi with respect to her fair tax amendment. And one of the numbers that I had, that I know, is that 20% of people in Illinois, family units in Illinois that file taxes, earn less than $18,000 a year. And the state and local tax burden combined on those folks is over 13%. Now, the top 1% of incomes in Illinois, which are mostly, the vast majority of them are on Chicago North Shore and wealthy Chicago suburbs, they're not around here. That top 1% averages $2 million a year. And their local, their combined state and local tax burden is about 6%. It's less than half of the, so one of the things that we all ought to do, you don't have to convince your local representative or your local senator to be for the fair tax amendment that'll permit a progressive income tax. But if you have, if you are part of a statewide organization that's advocating for people of lower incomes or just advocating for fairness in general, actually, it's not just lower incomes, it's low and middle incomes. People who are making $50,000 a year are still getting ripped off relative to the wealthy people. So if you have any way to have contact with people around the state, we're talking about a sample tax schedule that- a sample tax schedule that Naomi is putting forth, would, for that person who's earning $18,000 a year, would lower their taxes by approximately $400 a year, which is not trivial at that income level. So if, if, so I think that although we are a local body, this, we have no way to levy a fair tax. The taxes we levy are regressive, and we have no other way. Our sales tax is a higher percentage of people's income for the lower-income people. Our property tax is a higher percentage of people's income for the lower-income people. The only way we can strike, the way we can be a voice for that fairness, is to support progressive taxation across the state, to compensate for the fact that local taxes, by their very structure, are regressive. So I hope that, I hope that folks will, will do that and make their voices heard across the state.
All right. Okay. Other comments and guests to mayor?
Eric, you said the bottom 20%, what was the top percent?
So the top 1%-
1%.
Which starts at about $500,000 a year, averages $2 million a year. But 95 out of the top 100 income zip codes in Illinois are on the North Shore of Chicago or in the wealthy Chicago suburbs. This is, you know, we have some folks who like to talk about the, I'm going to get on a soapbox here a little bit, but we have some folks who like to talk-
Try to avoid that.
We have some folks who like to talk about above and below I-80. And the folks up above I-80 are ripping us off. It is true, but most of the folks we're talking about, they're saying the poor folks above I-80 are ripping us off. It isn't the poor folks, it's the wealthy ones.
Which, which reminds me that we actually didn't support a progressive stormwater utility fee, as well as progressive as it could have been. So there might be a decide, decision to, well, I mean, that's a cut topic you're bringing up, and it can go in different directions. Anybody else? Yes, Charlie?
Well, let me just sort of summarize where I think we're at, and throw some things, some of the things out there. We have seven general topics, and, oh, what's the eighth topic? Oh, okay, you don't put that under effective city government? That's where I put it, but-
So you put participatory-
Yeah. Is that okay?
Diane, I would, I would recommend that we change the Roman numerals to Arabic numerals, so people can-
Yeah, some people follow these here, yeah, we can do that. The, you know, just, you know, you just, word just starts doing this, you know, when you ask it to. What I would like to do next is get feedback from you and rewrite the seven areas, okay? So that's something I can do, getting feedback from each of you, work with Mike, he wrote them originally, so we should be able to tweak these. You know, Diane changed two sections there, I'm sure she's got language that she can feed to Mike, and the, you know, where we broadened the economic, where we changed the economic one, and we talked about zones of the city as opposed to just downtown, and we split the other one out. So there's seven areas. We'll bring, bring a draft of some kind to you for, for those seven areas, and include the idea of participatory. What we need next, though, and this would involve staff, the public, and us, are project ideas. And this is where, you know, really staff knows what we can do. I'm sure they've got projects that they'd like to suggest, public have specific projects. I've given some, you know, I've given some examples here, but to do a survey, we're going to need, you know, 30, 40, 50 ideas out there of what we want to throw in the mix. And of course, we want to have another category to get some additional ideas from the public. So that feedback should come back to me and/or Mike and/or Diane, or you, you know, however we want to do it. It should come back to the council members, but we need to funnel them all to Mike at some point.
How specific are you thinking about this project?
Well, you know, look, an example here is, you know, we know a big one, a big ticket in the one that we've got to tackle is Windsor Road. It's a $6 million project, you know, that's on the list, I would think. You know, that's an example of a project. Another one that's near and dear to me is simply funding a half-time social worker for the police department. You know, we need to address mental health issues, and we know a half-time mental health worker could go a long way to helping remove some burden of non-police duties from police officers right now, and we should get that done sooner than later. But, and that's something I, we've been talking about since social service funding. So those are two examples.
So, so, just one question on process. You want our responses back before we go to the public, other public sessions are scheduled?
Yeah, it'd be good if, you know, if we can get this, you know, should we, if in two weeks we can get-
The ideas from the other folks.
Yeah, projects, ideas, and everything that we can, in two weeks, we could bring it up, and then we could put together a survey, which would have that, and we could take it out to the public.
Okay.
And my idea for the public would be to work with each of our neighborhood groups. We've got Wuna, Suna, Huna, and, and Yukon, essentially. We've got, and they cover the four essential geographic areas. We need to do a Berenger Commons, Stone Creek, they've got their own individual neighborhood associations, right?
Yeah.
So there would be another-
Homeowners' associations.
Yeah, homeowners' associations there, so we'd have some, some other areas, so we need to figure out how to, maybe we have four or five meetings, or we have four geographic meetings and one centralized meeting at the civic center, or something like that, to bring it all together.
All right. Other comments? Yes, mayor pressing.
Yeah, because people could put together all kinds of things that we should have, what we would like to have, but we're in a very difficult financial situation, so they should also think about how to pay for it.
Are you saying that the dreams are many, but the coiners few? All right. Well, you know, at least, at least as we iterate the city council's concerns and goals, we may at least then get a priority listing of the most urgent to address in the minds of the community. And it, you know, just puts maybe a few off, you know, a couple of years perhaps, but nonetheless, we still have these goals. Okay, Bill, and then Eric.
I guess part of the goals would probably, I would imagine, not just be spending projects, but more like policies or investment ideas that we can do that would enable the tax base to grow better. So if that could be worked in, other than just spending projects, kind of ideas to make the city grow, would also be a project in that sense, as far as getting input from And I don't know how specific you wanted to get tonight, but I think Carletta's idea of boards and commissions under effective city government would, would work, put something in there, and maybe even think about an online survey question about that, additional boards and commissions you'd like to see, boards and commissions you'd like to understand better, I don't know, some, maybe some survey question about that we could think about.
And in relation to that, and before I acknowledge you, Eric, it is, I wondered about whether there's a way of, kind of reviewing process within the city in terms of working with business and business operators, or especially like in construction and development, to facilitate and reduce frustration in this group of people who work with the city and try to achieve things by building and growing the city. And there might be a desire to compare process with communities nearby, to see if we're not somehow restricting potential.
Okay. Eric?
So I, I happen to know, just by chance, a person who is a property manager in Indianapolis. So she lives in Champaign, but she is, spends her week in Indianapolis and her weekend's back here. And so I asked her about Grant Hinkle, the, or whatever the first name was, but the people from Indianapolis who came and talked to us about the new development. And I, I said, you know, did she think they were good? And especially, did she think they were good folks in terms of good quality, well-managed, low-income housing? And she said, yes, but she thought that they were one of a number of big developers in Indianapolis, and big managers in Indianapolis who do that. She, she thought that the, that the situation there is significantly better than the situation here, in terms of that segment of the housing stock, both, both the quality of it and how it's run and how it works. So I'm wondering if we should, you know, informally at least, take a look at what they are doing, and, and whether, you know, there are some clues there as to how we can, you know, improve the situation that we have here, instead of, you know, just moving it from one neighborhood to another.
Sounds reasonable. Okay, thank you. Others, we're coming to the end of our session. Yes, Michael?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo a couple of the comments that Bill and Dennis have made about things that we should do in here and measuring them. I, I think, I've received some email and some comments in meetings from folks, mostly in the business community, but who are residents as well, who are interested in, in maybe looking at these goals, and what are we shooting for? What is the measurable result? And I think that's a fair thing to ask for in a goals document. I mean, I, I applaud you guys for having this kind of document previously. It's, it gives great guidance to the staff, it lets the city know what we're shooting for, but at the same time, putting something more specific in, like for instance, building a reserve to, you know, to 3 million, that's a, that's a specific goal. Maybe we can attach some specific goals to many of the other, or specific end goals to some of these other items as well. With regard to the boards and commissions, I like that idea. Frankly, I think they ought to be under periodic review by ordinance, for whether or not they should continue to exist, and if they should, is their mission appropriate for, for the city? Is what they're doing what the city needs? Should it be changed? Should they present regular reports and be under review for continuing to operate? And if they're not meeting, or if they're canceling a lot of meetings, I get a lot of meeting cancellation notices, maybe they ought to be looking at how often they should be meeting, or we ought to be looking at that by ordinance. You know, just things like that, which would maybe help make them more efficient. But more importantly, I think we really do need to focus on economic development, because folks' incomes and folks' opportunities are only going to get better if we, if we stop looking at penalizing high earners, the folks who are the business owners in the community with higher taxes, and instead, give them incentive to bring more business to town. Therefore, more subdivisions come, we don't have to worry about trying to annex subdivisions that exist to get more money. We can, you know, build out or infill whole new developments. So, I mean, to me, those are the kind of things that I'd like to see incorporated in here. And a lot, and there's a lot of economic development stuff in here, but I mean, I just think there needs to be a little bit more meat to the bones, and hopefully, over the next several weeks, that'll begin to happen.
And we appreciate the fact that you're going to want to do some submitting on that area. Okay, so Diane?
That would be infill, development of this outline here.
Infill.
So over the next couple, next couple of weeks, we all need to be, you know, looking at these general areas and identifying more specific goals, the strategies underneath those. Okay. Can't hear at all?
Now we can.
Okay. Over the next couple of weeks, we need to be looking at these seven general areas and adding specific strategies and steps toward these goals. So this is just the beginning, but, you know, support everything that's been said so far.
I heard that Carol wants to-
I think they turned all our mics up now, and I'm too loud and they too long. I just wanted to ask, I think through the whole process, ultimately, we're going to get to a point where we say, here are the priorities for this year, because we can't do everything, and although it may sound good, you know, you may not be able to measure it, right? So some things are non-financial issues that we can change by policy or ordinance, we should look at those things, and then other things that we need to put some money towards. We also have to make a commitment to reallocating already existing funds, and otherwise, the process itself is just exercise, if you understand what I'm saying. If we're not going to reallocate funds to fund some of these things that are very important to us, like finding some partnerships for low-income housing that really fits those under $30,000 people that Eric just talked about, you know, we have to reallocate funds to do that. And so that needs to also be considered. We don't want to just do exercise just for the purpose of exercising.
And mayor, did you want to speak?
Yeah, on the issue of economic development, there was a very positive report about the possibility of high-speed rail from Chicago through Champaign, formerly known as West Urbana, and then on to Springfield and St. Louis, and also Indianapolis. So that was the huge driver in the 19th century, and I think it's going, it would be a huge impact on this community, too. So I was happy to see that there's a report out now that said it would be self-sustaining, and the, the difficult part is the beginning, which could be a public-private partnership, and that's happened in other countries. So I think that's a really good sign.
Charlie Smythe?
Yeah, just a, sort of in closing comment here, I was reminded by, by several of you that we have some goals that are unfinished in here. Some of them are exactly the things that have been stated. Part of it is funding, part of it is, is a lack of, of time or personnel. So feel perfectly free to do what I was doing today, which was highlighting those which I'd like to move forward, and suggest those as, you know, perfectly free to suggest those and, and keep them in the document going forward.
Okay, and I think we're just, do you have one more?
No, just to ask Diane, I went through to try to find their copy of the email, and I couldn't find but Mike Munson's. So if you could just resend me the electronic version of your copy.
This came from Debbie Roberts, it was sent out on Thursday?
I, I don't have that one. I have a, the meeting, but I just don't have that one, thank you.
Okay, I can send it.
All right. And then, so hey, this is actually, so efficient, we're actually closing at the time we said we would. As I want, it's a miracle, folks, and we're trying to, appreciate that. I just wanted to invite again, everyone, here's a little itty-bitty card for you. The city's birthday, 180th birthday is this year, it actually occurred in June. Do you know that the city was established on the solstice, the day of the solstice, June 21st? Although I guess today it was, this year was the 22nd, but we're right on the cusp there. But we're celebrating it this Saturday, and we're going to be, the location is going to be the Landmark Hotel, so if you haven't seen the renovations there, it's a really opportunity to come in. It's going to be Saturday at 11 o'clock, from 11 o'clock to 12, where there's going to be music, performance, results of a limerick contest. We're going to have, recreate a footrace between Abel, Abe Lincoln and Sam Waters, an early hotelier and tavern owner. Should be fun, and if you haven't turned in your limerick, there are three boxes in the city, one in the clerk's office, one at uni high, and one in the free library on the main desk. Hopefully, everybody will be able to get their limericks in tomorrow. I'm sort of willing to extend it maybe a day, but also, I've given you my email, you can, you can look my email up on the website, send them to me via email, and I will happily include them in the contest. So come and enjoy, and have some cake on Saturday. And seeing no other for the business, we are adjourned.